All right, we're recording.
All right, Bill.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 17th St. Patrick's Day meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Tonight, we have one public hearing and we have a concept plan review as well as signage applications for the board to review. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask that the secretary call the role, please.
Altman. Price.
Here.
Fader.
Here.
Sivaleti.
Here.
Babcock Steiner. Osowski.
Here.
Delaney is absent.
Okay, thank you. All right, we our first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from our February 17th meeting. Has everybody received and had an opportunity to review those meeting minutes? Seeing head nod, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Sivaleti moves.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. I think I heard Osowski I was going to go with.
Karen is saying something she just can't hear.
I think as close as I can, so let me know if you can't hear me.
Yeah, no, we were having trouble hearing you Karen, you're right, so you do need to be close, it sounds like. So I have second Osowski to approve the minutes.
All right, thank you. Moved in second, and is there any other comments or edits than anybody has? All right, please call the roll.
Altman. Price.
Aye.
Fader.
Yes, aye.
Sivaleti.
Aye.
Babcock Steiner.
Aye.
Osowski.
Aye.
Karen, we're still having trouble hearing you, so.
All right.
We keep our eyes on you.
Okay.
Thank you. So we, as mentioned, we do have a public hearing tonight, and Mr. Secretary, can you confirm that the public hearing was properly advertised?
The public hearing was properly advertised in the Brighton Pissford Post of March 11th, 2021.
All right, we'll hear that application now. It is application in, I'm sorry, 9P NB1-20. This is the application of the Baptist Bible Temple and Clover Park Properties LLC for preliminary site plan approval to convert the former church to an office building at 1075 Clover Street. I believe I heard Mr. Goldman is going to represent the applicant. You could let Mr. Goldman in, please.
As soon as I'm unmuted, you already have.
You are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the agent for Clover Park Properties LLC. This is a contract vendee of the Baptist Temple property located at the southwest corner of Highland Avenue and Clover Street. With me tonight, I'm the applicationer John August, who is a principal of Clover Park Properties and the immediately adjacent neighbor to the south of the subject property on Clover Street, and Matt Tomlinson, who is a project engineer from Marathon Engineering. This property is located in the RL zoning district and has been utilized for the Baptist Temple Church since its construction in 1964. The Baptist Temple Church has been attempting to downsize and sell the property, and Mr. August and his group have entered into a contract to acquire the property contingent on their being able to redevelop the property for for an office use. We're here this evening to talk about changes from the site plan, changes from the original site plan submission, I should say. When last we were before the board, it was in November of last year, and since that time, we have been actively engaged in reviewing the site plan, talking to neighbors, getting input relative to the site. And there are a couple of major site plan, well, there is a basic major site plan change on the site. The major site plan change is the removal of a 10,000 square foot addition to the building, which was to be located on the northwest section of the of the building as depicted on the on the sheet or on your screens right now. After after review financially and after review and consultation with the neighbors, the site plan now eliminates that building. The net result is that we have made additional site plan changes with regard to the overall site, which enhanced the green space on the site. And and which also are in a scale as depicted on the site plan. We're back before the planning board. The planning board did make a determination that they would seek lead agency status for a coordinated review of this action under seeker. There was no objection, so the planning board is the body who will be will be conducting the seeker review on this matter. As indicated, this is an RL district, and therefore we will need a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. But the zoning board, in their normal consideration, does approve plans based or approve variances based upon the plans before them. So we want to more thoroughly vet the site plan with this board before moving forward with the zoning board. We understand tonight that this is a reintroduction of the project. We have no desire, no intention, well, we have no intention of or expectation that there will be decisions tonight by this board on any aspect of this application, but we're here tonight to explain the site plan changes that we have to obtain input from this board and and hopefully come back for a fuller review at the April Planning Board meeting. With that introduction, I would like to turn it over to Matt Tomlinson, who will talk about the site plan changes. And John August will share his perspective primarily on landscaping type issues and and other issues. All of this will be available, of course, for board questions at the end of the presentation. So with that, Matt.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Matt Tomlinson, Marathon Engineering. I'm just going to walk through quickly the changes. I know that the board has seen both plans, and in our letter, we stepped through several of the changes, but I wanted to just discuss them here, and then, as Jerry mentioned, we can answer any questions. So primarily, we have removed the building addition, and as part of that reduction of 10,000 square feet on the project site that has affected the necessary parking that is required, as well as impacting the traffic and trip generation. That's another piece that we have spent some time coordinating in the interim since the last time we appeared before you, and I'll circle back to that in just a little bit. So from a parking changes standpoint, driven by the reduction in the building square footage and the removal of the addition, we have removed the parking within the playground area to the south and west of the site that was shown as banked parking. We are no longer, yep, great, thanks. We're no longer modifying the parking lot there along the west edge, which we were proposing to change as well. That existing parking will remain. We've also removed the parking spaces out to the front being the Clover Street side of the parcel along the entrance loop, as the main focus has been to place the parking proximate to the south and west entrances that now will function as the main entry points to the building. And then, if you can go back to the new plan there, Jeff, yeah, great, thanks. The intention would be to limit or minimize the amount of dollars spent on that southmost parking lot, and while the intention is to essentially bank those spaces, that is all existing impervious parking right now. So we have some further discussion that we will do relative to banking parking, but essentially what's shown on the plan here, building the parking within the middle of the site in that green space, essentially fills out what's required for the site, and ultimately, all of that parking or paved surface will be constructed once that's completed. We have incorporated several landscape islands. We did appear before the Conservation Board last Tuesday to discuss these plan changes with them and received a couple of comments, but generally, the board was in favor. The big piece of that is we've significantly reduced the amount of plant material that was proposing to be removed because essentially, we're leaving all the existing pavements in place. We're just removing a couple of pines that are in relatively poor condition internal to the site within the existing parking area and replacing that material with several trees throughout the new islands that we are incorporating, as well as some additional plant materials along the south property line. And John's going to speak on that just a minute as soon as I finish through. We also have reduced the amount of lighting to be more commensurate with the existing levels of lighting within the parking field, similar in spacing, dark sky compliant, very low levels of light. That was definitely something that we received comment from the neighbors. The intention is not to have this open much after dark, if at all, and the lighting levels have been significantly reduced in an effort to to mimic what's out there versus lighting it up like a typical office parking lot. And then, from a traffic standpoint, removal of that 10,000 square feet does demonstrate a reduction in overall density, although there are some mitigating items that we had included in the traffic study relative to while there is a square footage reduction, John is interested in pursuing not a medical off or a medical office, non-patient driven, as well as enabling the daycare to stay there for the foreseeable future. And so, one of the items that we discussed with staff was capturing that information and ensuring that sending to county DOT and state DOT a traffic impact study that captured the intended use of the building was critical to ensuring that there was no impact, and we have submitted a draft of that TIS to town staff for their review, and also subsequently submitted it to the county and state DOTs, and just recently, within the last day or so, got letters stating that there was no impact and no mitigation necessary from both of those agencies, which is what we expected, but we wanted to go through that process in order to satisfy any concerns from neighbors and or the town relative to the proposed reuse of this building. So with that, I'll turn it over to John, just to speak a little bit, and then we can finish up with questions. Yep.
Yeah, if I could just, I only wanted to make one comment really regarding the landscaping, but as Matt said, we tried very hard in the lighting, it'll be dimmable, where we've located the parking, where the entrance of the building will be, to try to mitigate is any impact to the neighbor. But I have been called by neighbors, many of which are my friends back when, to tell me that a letter was circulated back when telling the neighborhood by someone in the neighborhood that we were going to be removing many of the signature trees around the corner, and we like this opportunity to publicly state that there are, I think, a total of six trees coming down, only one hardwood, and you can see the new ones that are being added. And I just want to get that out because it still lingers in our neighborhood that we are taking all the trees down, and we've been very careful with the immediate neighbors to work with them to find out what their wishes were, and I think we feel we've got those met, and I think we're very close with the neighbors agreeing that this plan looks like is one that all could live with and would serve the neighborhood well. I want to thank the planning board. It's all I wanted to make a point was, we would like to clarify what's what's rumored out there about our intention about trees. Matt, of course, you've added screening in a lot of the areas that wasn't in as well. I'll let you go through the plan. That's all I wanted to mention.
Yeah, absolutely. We have added some screening material up near the dumpster and the front parking lot, which is now no longer screened by that building addition, some additional materials along the south, and then, as I mentioned, throughout the parking. One other point before I turn it over to Jerry to kind of emcee questions, I did forget to mention that the rear yard, which is defined as kind of the south and western portions of the site, we originally are in our original submission, we're going to be required to obtain a rear yard lot coverage variance that will no longer be required as we've reduced the impervious in that rear yard by removing quite a bit of the southern impervious surface to less than what is existing. So we have been able to eliminate one area of variance as part of this modification to the plan.
Hey, I'll I'll pick it up from here and just make a couple of additional comments, just dovetailing on what Matt had just said. This is a plan which requires no area variances other at all. The only variance which is necessary is the use variance for which we have made an initial submission, and we'll be modifying that submission before the before the zoning board of appeals. The major signature aspect of this development, in addition to not having any additional structures on the site, is the maintenance of the corner of Highland and Clover. It's a corner that a lot of us have lived in Brighton have learned to really love in terms of having its green space out there, and we're able to, with this plan, keep that keep that setting in place throughout. Matt made reference with daycare. There is an existing daycare in the building. That daycare, I believe, is approximately 7,000 square feet of the building itself. We have been asked by a number of people not to be disruptive to the daycare because people have to relocate daycare spaces are tough to find. So it's the intention of the owner to maintain the daycare in place for a period of time, and our traffic analysis takes that into account because it will be there at the onset or at the beginning of any redevelopment of this property. Ultimately, that space would be converted to to office space when the daycare when daycare leaves. So that pretty much is our presentation relative to this. I believe that the board did receive the Conservation Board comments, and and we basically had a good reception in front of that board, so we're now prepared to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Matt and John.
Yeah, I don't have any additional comments.
Oh, I was I was thanking John August. Just a second. So Matt Tomlinson, I just wanted to ask you, are the light fixtures that are proposed all new, or are they just retrofits of the existing poles that are lamp posts that are there?
I can answer that, I think. I worked on the lighting with one of our partners, who's a lighting distributor. These are all new poles and lights getting rid of the stainless to match the dark color throughout. They'll be dimmable down to 25% after dark, and they'll all be photo celled, so they will react to light that come on after dark, and of course, there'll be a single or two nightlights left on after 11 o'clock.
Okay, we can talk about pole base heights when we get into more detail on the site. I just wanted to know if those were going to be new, and are you, does the fact the there's no longer parking on the clover side of the building mean you're leaving the current sidewalk that's on that radius and up to the front door?
That's the intention, yes.
Okay.
Any egress used for egress as needed.
Okay. All right. And Matt Tomlinson, the stormwater management area, now, has that has that been changed in size as a result of reduction in the building and the building footprint and paved area?
Yeah, so I believe that we submitted a green space figure with the plan set, and we're essentially right at maybe just under the 20,000 square foot limit that Brighton has in their code for requiring a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Our amount of pavement added is approximately 7,500 square feet. Now, we're taking some out, adding some, right? So those limits are very close. Yeah, perfect, thank you. So the blue on that screen is the new, green is what is existing pavement that's going to be turned back into green space. So we're trying to balance out that site bill. The the front infiltration area that we were originally showing was intended mostly to handle the new roof, which now isn't there. Generally, this site slopes north to south, and the tree planting is really going to be our mitigating factor from a green infrastructure or a stormwater treatment, given that there is no storm utility connection points to the south along Clover. There's just no system out there.
All right. All right, that's my initial questions. Why don't we go on? I'll call on folks. Laura, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, no, I appreciate the the reduction intensity and the preservation of the existing trees. I did notice on the landscaping plan, the Norway maple, or sorry, Norway spruce is on the plant list, and I would strongly encourage finding a substitute for that.
Okay, we can look at that for sure.
Okay, Karen, do you have any questions?
At this time. I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
John Osowski.
Yeah, I noticed that the water service is being upgraded. Is that being done with the intent to provide a sprinkler protection for the building?
Yeah, we still need to go through the building code process, but we do anticipate it's in in anticipation that they may be necessary. That's correct, John.
All right, thank you. And is there any intent to put a emergency backup electric generator somewhere?
Don't know that yet. I think it's likely, but it hasn't been yet decided, John.
All right, thank you.
Jason?
No, I'm all set.
All right. Who am I, who am I out? David Fader?
Um. No, I'm I'm all set.
Okay. John August. We saw some renderings previously of the architecture and the elevations of the proposal. Is there any difference to what you were proposing relative to the existing building?
Not at all. It's carving windows as needed into the existing structure and a straight replacement of the existing doors and windows on the building, same same openings with just energy efficient glass. I thought we had sent Matt a new rendering in, maybe we didn't. I'm sorry, we've just taken that last sketch that we had given you and formalized a little more. I'll I'll make certain that's sent over to the planning board to review.
Yeah, I believe I believe it was sent, but I'm not sure it's in the package. I don't know if you guys saw that, Bill.
You're not proposing any major substantive changes to what you had originally.
No, the existing existing building windows as needed, that would be okay.
Okay.
And we, this is the Architecture Review Board, so we will be doing that as well as part of this process.
Jerry, FYI, your camera's pointing somewhere. We can't see you.
Uh oh. Uh oh.
Just for the planning board's review, the main entrance will be the center entrance where the two sidewalks come together. We picked that. It's central. We have to install an elevator. Knowing that was the best way to hide the entrance, if there might be some outside seating, people are talking, coming out of the building together, they're hidden from Clover and Highland back in that corner of the building. I've also agreed not to put any ingress into this building on Highland Avenue. We may be required to put it out an egress door only, but there would be no entrances along Highland, really, or Clover Street used as an entrance to the building, egress only.
Okay, very good. All right, Ramsey, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, could you talk a little bit about the bank parking? Are you planning for that area to be lawn area?
All right. John's been having some discussions with neighbors relative to that. We are trying to minimize disturbance to the site. So the intention would be, and I it's kind of not really banked being that it's paved already, Ramsey, but the intention would be to tone it off, not necessarily use it, not improve on it unless and until it's necessary. So that's that's something that we're still have up in the air right now, but it is paved area already over there. So it would seem a little bit backwards to remove it and then pave it back in again if it's if it's needed later.
I think you have to do one or the other. If you're calling it banked, you may want to do it a little bit more properly. I don't know the condition of that area. If I remember, I thought it was a little warm. I don't know what its longevity would be, especially if you're thinking you don't need the parking. I'm leaving that to you, John. You know what you need and don't know need, but obviously, then when you come back, if you could clarify that.
Sure.
And I'm so confused. How much medical space are you proposing right now?
It's 8,000 feet is what the parking accommodates.
That is what you did say. Okay. And the last thing is, are you proposing any additional screening along the western boundary?
Yeah, I did see that that comment came back in from Conservation Board, and I don't know if the board has seen the property, but it is, there's solid fencing along the entirety of the west property line, and to put up another fence to create a couple foot wide alley that's difficult to maintain did not seem to make very much sense to us. I think that there's a way that we can make a commitment that a fence would be put in if a neighbor's fence came down to provide that screening that John would be happy to do so, and especially given that we are no longer proposing any improvements or extension of that parking lot along the west property line. We wanted to leave that the way that it is today. So that that's our proposal, but willing to have a discussion about it if there's additional comment.
Are there any type of plannings you could put along that edge as opposed to the fence? I, you know, I'm having trouble seeing how wide it is, or?
Yeah, it's about it's about three and a half to four feet.
Is that all it is?
Ramsey.
Not enough room there.
Very well shaded by mature shade trees along the rear of the neighbor's property.
The next thing is just you go with the condition that the property line needs to have have a fence maintained. It would do that. That existing fence is nearly seven feet from our side as it sits on a the elevation on those council rock backyards are about a foot higher, and there's about 40 feet of it that was just installed a few last year, I think, by Luke Dutton on the corner. It's brand new fencing, but we would be willing to maintain and guarantee its replacement should it ever be needed, when it's needed.
All set, Ramsey?
Yep.
Questions from the board? Everybody set? Okay, this is a public hearing and like to open it up to questions of people interested in this application. Would you please, Jeff Fresh is monitoring this, and if you do have a comment or a question, first of all, everything is directed to the planning board and not to the applicant. We will in turn ask the applicant questions as we as we see fit. But there's a raise hand feature on your on on Zoom here, or you can wave your arms frantically and hopefully.
Trying to see you, but I do see an Allison Bartlett with her hand raised, I believe.
Okay, Allison.
Yes, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Allison Bartlett from Harder Sea Crest in Emery. We represent neighbors who live along Clover Street in Marvin Park across the street from the proposed projects. My comments today are going to be brief. We understand that Mr. August has been having discussions with neighbors and that the parties are working towards a settlement to resolve issues related to this project. We're hopeful that a resolution will be reached, but any such resolution has not yet been finalized. So as a result, at this time, we So as a result, at this time, we request that the public hearing remain open and no final actions, including any seeker determinations of significance, are made by the board tonight in relation to this project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate you coming out. Anyone else? Mick Wood is waving his arm around.
You see, I'm worried. You see him, Jeff?
I think I'm I think I'm unmuted now.
Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. My name is Mick Wood. I'm an attorney with a law firm, Boylan Code. We represent Country Club condominium, which is located directly across Highland Avenue from the property, as I'm sure the board knows. I believe at least one member of the Board of Managers of Country Club condominium is in attendance at this meeting as well. I will also be brief. We submitted a letter to the board, which is included in the communications with the final agenda and which sets out our comments at this point to just briefly reiterate. The the proposed project obviously calls for a commercial use in a low density residential district. And therefore really isn't consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, which is residential on all sides of the property and isn't consistent with the town's master plan and is obviously going to have some impact on the surrounding neighborhood. As the board knows, the the change in use requires a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. So at this point, we're requesting, and I don't think that this is inconsistent with what the applicant has indicated at the beginning of the meeting. But we're requesting that the planning board table the application at this point. Hold off on any determinations until at least the the zoning board addresses it. So we can see if in fact a use variance is is issued at all and what restrictions are associated with it. So we can be in a better position to make comments about the specific details of the plan. I'll also acknowledge that there has been discussions with the with the neighbors and it does seem like progress has been made towards addressing concerns of the neighbors, at least to the extent those can be addressed. And so for that reason also, we ask that those discussions, which they indicated if there's been progress on, but I don't but which I don't think are complete, that those discussions be allowed to conclude before the planning board makes any determination. So we're also requesting that the the application be tabled and that the public hearing remain open so that additional comments can be submitted if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Other other questions or comments?
I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised. Let me just run through. If you want to be heard, just kind of raise your hand if you could.
Ramsey, this is Ken Gordon, Town Attorney. I just want to ask you a question, actually, Ramsey, as part of this public hearing. So I just heard Mr. Wood in a presentation and I read his letter in which he says that this property is completely surrounded by residential uses only. And I'm wondering if that is entirely accurate. It was my recollection that there is in fact medical office space directly across Highland Avenue from this property. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's also the allowance to have restaurant uses in the what was the old Renaissance compartment complex.
Just wanted to.
That's that is true. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that was part of.
Yeah, they're multi-use.
And and I did have a question for Marathon and or Mr. August. Relative to the daycare use of this property, is there a durational limit on how long the daycare is going to be allowed to operate in the property?
No, sir. No limits been set. I have promised a number of people. It would at least, if it was ever not allowed to continue, they would have a number of years notice so that those Brighton residents would have an opportunity to relocate their children in a proper manner. And we will abide by that, but there is no timetable set at this point. Ultimately, when the building's filled, it probably will not be the best use. And how long it takes to fill it remains to be seen, but foreseeable future, they will stay.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ken, I've got a question for you. Two attorneys have implied that they represent resident groups. They somehow seem like they're not a part of negotiations with neighbors. What what is the what what could be being negotiated that would affect the site plan as we're obligated to review it? I'm I'm concerned, you know.
Really, I don't. I think Mr. August or Marathon could speak to that better. I I don't know what issues are being discussed. I'm not party to those negotiations. I mean, for example, I believe those negotiations led to the removal of a 10,000 square foot addition. That's a significant site plan.
I just wondered, this this is essentially the same site that exists out there today. What else are we negotiating?
I I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, we're not a party of the negotiations, Bill.
Understood, but I I just don't want our authority, you know, being usurped to some other entity.
I I agree that it is ultimately the planning board's responsibility to give site plan approval or not give site plan approval, absolutely. But I think, and and please, Mr. August or folks from Marathon or whoever, Jerry, maybe you can jump in on this. I believe that what I'm I'm hearing is that we're maybe not looking at the final site plan. We're maybe not looking at the final project, that there may be changes that are yet to come and that those negotiations are ongoing in a sense that may result in minor or major modifications to what we're looking at at this point in time. We certainly don't want to go forward with having a deliberation over a proposed site plan and or whether this project has the potential of having a significant impact on the environment under seeker without knowing the full parameters of the project. In fact, it would be contrary to seeker for us to review only some portions of the project and not review the entire project as the developer is proposing. I Jerry Goldman.
I prepared to speak to that. I appreciate I appreciate your introducing me into the discussion on this, Ken. I I try to be very careful at the beginning to say these were discussions with the neighbors that are ongoing. We want to be able to address issues of concern. I would not turn them to be negotiations because as rightfully pointed out by the chairman and by Ken, the ultimate determination of the site plan to be approved is to be made by the planning board. The input that we have received from the neighbors has resulted in changes to the site plan. In particular, the removal of the 10,000 square foot building, the removal of parking along Highland Avenue. Some changes with regard to some of the landscaping and the like. We think that we have received some valued input from those neighbors. I would venture to say that the discussions which are ongoing do not necessarily affect the site plan itself in terms of the physical site plan, but are more involved in issues related to the zoning board and the use variance. So we're hopeful to be able to conclude our discussions and hopefully reach common ground with the neighbors. But what is being reviewed by the planning board here is not something that we consider to be schematic or raw at that, you know, at that level. We think as far as the site planner concerned, we we are well along in those discussions.
Well, let me let me put Bill's question to you. So Mr. Wood and Ms. Bartlett have told us what their ask is. Their ask is that the planning board not make any determination this evening. What are you asking of the planning board tonight?
I I said at the beginning and now reiterate, I have no expectation. We aren't asking this board to act. The board has to complete their seeker review, as Matt pointed out. A traffic report has been prepared. There has been input received as recently as earlier this week from state DOT and county DOT. I know it's currently in draft form and under review by the town as well. That certainly would be a key element in coming to a conclusion on determinations significance under seeker. So we have no anticipation that that would be done tonight in any event. So our.
You're not requesting that we make a seeker determination tonight. You're not requesting that we make a site plan determination tonight.
That is correct.
Purpose of tonight's meeting was to bring the planning board up to date to let them know what they're proposing to what changes that they're proposing. And they're hoping that we could do a determination of significance at our next meeting. We just got the traffic stuff. We're still reviewing it. We just got the letters from DOT and Monroe County just the other day. So we do need to complete that and we need to complete that before the zoning board can make a decision.
And Ramsey, have all of the issues set forth in the town engineer's letter been addressed?
No, because, no, they have not.
We have to make a determination of significance before the zoning board of appeals can act?
Yes.
Yeah, the the secret determination needs to be made before any board can take final action of any sort, sure. So whether it's a use variance that that secret determination needs to be made.
Okay. All right, has the application to the zoning board been made?
Yeah, it has been made. It is currently is in the same in the same fashion that we have been engaged in refinements before this board. We have also had our application tabled in front of the zoning board. Our desire is to complete the environmental review portion of this before going back to the zoning board and finalizing the the use variance so that they are they are clear on on how the planning board feels relative to the environmental factors.
Okay, Ramsey, well, I guess this would be for for Matt, Jerry. And Ramsey, do you believe that there is now this is sufficiently tied down from a site plan standpoint and a building square footage standpoint, a use standpoint that you can, we can complete part two of seeker and and move forward to a to a determination?
I I think they need to address the some of the outstanding comments of the town engineer. And we also need to conclude our review of the traffic study. But from what I'm seeing, I think we have everything. We just haven't completed our review yet. And I would I would, we don't have that much more work to do to complete that review, but we do need to get a resubmission to the outstanding comments that addresses the comments that we can use to determine the significance of the project. And so yes, we do need additional information, Bill.
Okay, all right, but it's not like you're just starting from scratch and, you know, letters haven't been sent off to DOT. This is this is fairly, this is further along as far as having received responses from involved or interested agencies.
Oh, yeah, no, we've they they gave us their blessing to be lead agency. One of the things I'm going to ask the planning board to do this evening is just declare themselves as lead agent. The other involved agencies have concurred with the planning board to be the lead agency. And I would recommend that the planning board consider designating themselves lead agency along with considering maybe the the tabling the application for additional information for us to make a determination of significance and to wrap up the site planning process.
That makes good sense to me as well, Ramsey. Jerry, you're expecting to present before the zoning board at the April 7th meeting then on this project?
We are not proposing to appear before April 7th. The issues that we still have left in discussion with the neighbors are issues which bear on on the use issues. We do want to lock that down. We also want to get the determination of significance under our belt so that when we appear before the zoning board, we have a clear application before them in terms of what relief we are asking for.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Bill and Ramsey, the outstanding comments from the town engineer primarily were issued with the old plan, so had.
He issued new comments based on your recent submission, Matt.
Okay, I have not seen those yet.
You have not seen them yet.
Okay, then, yes, we can.
Are there similar comments, Matt, by the way?
I'm sorry?
There's there's some of them are similar comments.
Yeah, so we can address those as soon as we receive, and I don't anticipate any any major issues here.
No, love its clarification.
Very good. Thank you all. All right. Any other, I'm just going to ask my board one more time, any other questions from the board? You can head. No hands raising, okay.
And I don't know if there's anyone else out there, Bill, who wants to make any other comments or wants.
I think Mick wanted to ask a question or.
Yes, just just a a question. Has the updated traffic study been posted to the website? I don't think I have.
No, they have not. They haven't submitted the final traffic study. They're waiting for reviews from the DOTs, which just issued their letters to see if there are any additional comments that they needed to address before they would submit the final. We're expecting that that will be coming in with their next submission. And that will be expected to be in before any determination of significance is made by the planning board.
Right, I guess.
Posted to the web once we do receive it.
Okay, yes, because that was that was my point. You really can't do a seeker determination until that has been addressed.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. All right. Guess at this point, we will move on in the agenda. That was our only public hearing for the evening. We have another application for concept review. That application is 3P NB 1 dash 21, 1950 to 1966 Monroe Avenue LLC. And this is for the gas station auto repair facility on the corner of Monroe and Elmwood. I don't know who is representing the applicant tonight.
Yeah, I can help there, Bill. We have, I believe, maybe Jerry Goldman again.
Double double header night for Jerry.
There you go.
It's now the sun has gone down. I guess it's a day night double header.
Jerry, is there anyone else that you wanted?
Yes, yes, I I was going to do the introduction if we're ready, if we're ready to move on that application. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent for P E M M LLC, who is the owner of Quickleys, which develops gas station, convenience stores and similar types of operations throughout the western New York area. With me tonight in the application, the primary presenter of the concept plans is going to be John Chiraba from Land Tech Engineering. In addition, with us this evening is our Ken Pirelli and Lou Tarricknoly from Quickleys, who can address questions which may come up relative to to operational issues if if those are issues which the board wants to address. The property, the property in question is located at what I would consider to be the southeast corner of Monroe and um and Elmwood. It's occupied by what was traditionally called the uh the mobile station um on that corner. Um the property at nineteen fifty Monroe Avenue is the gas station property. The property immediately to the east of it uh and to the right, the darker shaded area on the plan that was there uh is currently occupied by a two-story building which has a hairdresser um on the site. Uh both properties have been uh have been acquired by uh by P E M M and their desire is to redevelop the property into uh into a modern uh gasoline station and convenience store location. The, the current uh repair use of the property is um would be discontinued. Um depending on the concept plan we're talking about, uh we could be maintaining the same building, but two of the concept plans talk about a, a new building on the site. The uh the subject site will require relief from the zoning board as well. Um the relief required from the zoning board is a little bit different than what we've seen for other things like a use variance because we have an interesting pre-existing non-conforming situation right now uh with the repair facility and the gas station, which is not a permitted use in the BF one district. The BF one district does allow convenience stores um on the site, but the definition under the town court, the town code says gasoline shall not be sold. So our proceedings in front of the zoning board is basically to go before them to receive approval for a more conforming, non-conforming use, if you will, uh is provided for under the town code. Because basically what we are doing as far as uses are concerned are taking the repair facility, which is clearly a non-permitted use and replacing it with a permitted use uh being the convenience store, although it does require relief because gas station uh because gasoline sales will also occur on the site. The intention is to combine uh the two properties. Uh there are three concept plans which John is going to present. The first one is uh basically keeping the same buildings, uh the building and canopies as we have. The two are alternatives which we think probably are going to be more desirable uh from the planning board's point of view. Uh placing the building uh either um at the site where the um uh where the current building housing, the hairdresser is located. Or the third alternative uh would place that building on more near the corner of Monroe and Elmwood. Uh the developer's preference is to go uh with option number two, the building uh, the building is uh currently shown by Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. And I hope I haven't totally usurped all of John's presentation, but now I'm going to turn it over to John to uh to carry this forward.
Uh good evening, everybody. Can everyone hear me? So uh my name is John Chiraba with Land Tech, as Jerry has said, and uh I think he did steal a lot of my thunder.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, that's fine, Jerry, that's, that's fine. The other plans you see before you are, are, you know, kind of simplistic in nature and really just to guide us this evening on the intent of the board and to gauge your feelings on what you would like to see here. Um conversation with my client is they want to make this an asset to the, to the Brighton community. And whatever means they have to go through, as long as their business operation um can work there, they will do. And I'm sure Ken will speak to that um in a little while. Um last week, we went to the conservation board and showed the conservation board the same three concepts. Um they really didn't like concept one, um which is the keeping the existing building, remodeling that building, raising the house to the south and proposing a new parking lot. They uh they really didn't think that was going to work out too well. Um they, you know, wanted to see a revitalization of the corner and they were happy the fact that, you know, the, the owner is willing to spend a lot of money on a new building. Um so that's really where we are with that. I don't know if you want me to just stay on this, if you guys want to talk a little bit about it. But again, this is a very basic uh site plan. Uh we're proposing to keep everything as it is and totally remodel the building. Um put some outdoor seating facing Monroe Avenue and uh and having uh a new entrance on the south side of the building.
John, could I ask you to go through, walk through all three alternatives and then we'll uh we'll, we'll take them up and uh actually give uh uh Ken or uh other gentleman a moment to talk a little bit about Lou, sorry, a little bit about uh operations.
Sure, so if we move on to concept two, uh and this is our preferred option. This would propose a brand new building, twenty-five hundred square foot in size. This building would be set back approximately eleven feet from our southern property line, generally where the existing hair salon building is. We would have um, we would have uh access uh to Monroe Avenue via sidewalk and access um from an existing curb cut. This proposal shows a closing of two curb cuts which are closer um to Monroe Avenue. I believe right now we have a total of three curb cuts on uh the total holdings, uh which would be kind of a nightmare. So we are planning on working with the Monroe County DOT, the state DOT to come up with the best option. But option two would allow a canopy um towards the intersection in an area for landscaping uh beyond that to really dress up uh the corner. Uh this works well for traffic flow, uh for cars and pedestrians. We also propose uh an outdoor eating area, seating area to the east of the building, uh more like in the back. We provided other opportunities and dumpsters and things like that, which we could get in the nitty gritty of that in the future. The reason why we think this works pretty well is the operation of the building, uh the convenience store having one main entrance in and entrance out for security reasons, operationally, coolers and things such as that. Also, the canopy is elevated, so the site distance as you, as you drive down Monroe or Elmwood, Elm Grove Avenue, Elmwood Avenue, you can see through the corner. Yes, there might be cars there, there might be landscaping there, but you can see as you uh drive down the road. So that's really the elements of this plan. It works well, it flows well, and uh, you know, obviously, future plans will be dressed up a bit more to show more detail. Option three is taking the same twenty-five hundred square foot building, pushing it into the intersection, um creating a landscape corner with outdoor seating projected towards the corner. Uh we will have a sidewalk for pedestrians along the south side of the building that will go access both from Monroe and Elmwood Avenue. We would have a new canopy um to the rear of the property and parking associated with that. Um this, you know, the issues that we have operationally are the two front doors, uh a fairly dramatic increase in cost of the building. You know, you can imagine now we have created a building that we want to be a, a, an asset to the community. Now we had to do that on both sides, so extensive architectural features on that. Uh we are blocking possibly the site distance as you traverse Monroe and Elmwood Avenue. So that's, and that's the issue. And also within the building, having uh areas where you can't have coolers and things like that. So that's the main issue. So we're really looking at uh those three issues. We like to discuss openly and hopefully after discussions this evening, we can move forward in, in a direction and one of these two options and prepare more detailed plans in the future. So I guess that's pretty what we're getting on Lou or Ken want to say a few words.
Please go, please go ahead.
Well, I think um thank you, uh board, for taking our uh concept review this evening. I'm Ken Pirelli, I'm with uh M L L C Quickly's Gas Stations. My role is operations and development, so um you know, when it comes to questions specifically pertaining to the building and the operation, uh I'm happy to answer those. I think John and Jerry have both done an excellent job introducing um our three concepts and really looking for direction of, of the board for one of those concepts so that we can continue to develop that plan uh per, per the board's direction. Some of the things I just want to point out, um you know, with, with both concept two and concept three, we're really addressing the walkability, access and safety, uh reducing three curb cuts on Monroe Ave down to one and two curb cuts on Elmwood down to one. We have direct sidewalk connection to existing sidewalks on Monroe Ave and Elmwood um as well as increasing uh impervious lot coverage between asphalt and sidewalk, which currently doesn't exist. Um you know, it, the existing conditions have asphalt directly abutting the sidewalk. Um and and I think those are, are huge safety concerns for any um high-traffic operation um such as what exists currently. So um obviously, we, we, in both of these plans have taken into consideration and at least showing that our thoughts are towards electric charging stations, outdoor seating, um bike racks, walkability and safety, um all which are, are um proposed in option two and three. And and we did our best even in option one where we leave the existing building, but there are limitations um as to what can be accomplished uh given the current footprint.
Good evening, everyone. Uh Lou Tarrinoli, I'm Director of Real Estate uh with Quickly's. And I just wanted to add with regard to the landscaping where the existing site really does not have any, whether it's option two or option three, the amount of landscaping has been dramatically increased both, both in the, the quantity and what we will have as the quality of the landscaping to, to dress up that, that corner. And even with our, our outdoor seating, that'll be dressed up appropriately for both aesthetics and both safety for the customers and the residents of the neighborhood.
Like to add a couple of more comments also, uh if I can, this is Jerry. Um because the Monroe and Elmwood intersection is not a ninety-degree intersection, it does create uh some interesting uh lot lines, if you will, taking a look at this. Um one of the issues that we would have to deal with if we were in option number three is that uh the variances that we would be seeking from the zoning board would be pretty extensive and, and pretty extreme. We, we're not far off property lines because we would have no choice. No matter what we did, we would be pretty close to property lines over there. So in essence, if we're going uh to an option three, I think we would need some pretty, pretty very solid support from the uh, from the planning board on the uh, on the concept itself. Um also, um obviously, as we progress further, uh we will be presenting uh the architectural uh work and Quickly's does a very nice job with their architecture on all their locations. And they understand that this is a high-profile intersection for uh, for the town of Brighton. It's one that I personally have hoped uh would be redeveloped in a way uh to bring some, uh to bring some good modernity, if you will, and do some good design uh to all of the uses on the, on the twelve corners. So uh with that, I guess we would be looking for the board's input unless anyone else on the team has anything else to offer. I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Does, all right, so we have uh three, three options before us. Um is there anyone that you, usually with concept review, uh you know, Ken and uh Lou and uh John, we, we tend to go around uh board member by board member just to get thoughts and uh ideas so that you uh uh get a sense of where we're, we're coming from. We, we, we do not rehearse this and uh so this is, you know, everybody's individual opinions. And then I would probably try to wrap it up at the end and see if I could tell you uh if there were some you know, overall uh ideas that we're, we're giving or guidance that we're able to give you. Laura, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Um I think my concern about option three with moving the building up to the corner would definitely be the um the sightlines through the intersection. Um since it is on an acute angle, um I think there's the opportunity for the proposed building location to um obstruct, you know, the view of people who are approaching the intersection, making the decision about whether they should you know, try to proceed through the intersection, especially on yellow lights, which is when people tend to make um bad decisions anyway. Um the other options, you know, I think if, if, if the existing building is, is useful, obviously it would be good to try to utilize it versus demolishing and build new. Um but don't really have a s- strong opinion one way or the other, you know, between the uh existing building or the new building in a similar location.
Thank you, Ken?
I, I would like to know a little bit more about, can you hear me? I know I'm.
Yes, we can hear you, Karen.
Um I'd like to know a little bit more about Quickly's operations in terms of what's in the store, how the store, you know, what are the uses in the store in that twenty-five hundred square foot building to understand a little more about your business model there.
Hey, I think I can speak to that. Thank you uh for that question. So Quickly's, I'll just give a little bit of an overview. We are a family-owned and locally operated gas station, convenience store chain. We're based out of Avon, New York. Um we have twenty-three locations in um the surrounding area. We do extend as far north as Water Town and as far su- south as um Belmont and Allegheny County, with the majority of our stores being in Monroe County and Livingston County. Um we, we're kind of eclectic in that we acquire existing stations and rehab them uh as well as build ground up from, um you know, through land acquisitions. We have a large variety of offerings. This would be one of the smaller um raise and rebuild opportunities um in that we don't have a lot of, you know, on our, on our sites, on our bigger sites, we develop car washes. We have drive-throughs with quick serve restaurants. Um we do utilize local um family, other family-owned and operated um restaurants where food offerings, Maseroni's Pizza are in some of our locations, Caliber Cell's subs and delis are in some of our other locations. So it's not just QSR, we partner with um whatever the site calls for. In this case, we are actually not proposing any of those additional uses. This would be more strictly a traditional convenience store uh with gas services. Um our convenience items are, are pretty typical, um snacks, chips, drinks, sodas, beer. Um there is lottery, there are cigarettes, there are tobacco products, those are all part of our, our traditional C-store offerings. Um we are responsible retailers in that we strictly adhere to all state regulations and controls for all of those um offerings. This would not be a twenty-four hour location. This would be, um you know, some of our locations are twenty-four hours, typically ones that are more highway oriented for, for the late travelers. Um our community ones are more of a typical five to ten, five to eleven, whatever, you know, might be part of the um town limitations. A good example of a site that we recently purchased and remodeled and added to is in the Village of Fairport. So, you know, we're familiar with working within uh villages and walking communities. This uh, we, we acquired a gas station, an existing gas station, convenience store. Um we added on square footage, added uh Caliber Cell's deli, put outdoor seating, sidewalks, bike racks, um refurbished the whole site. And it was, you know, we, we met with the architectural committee of, of the village um as well as the village planning boards, zoning boards, went through all the due process, utilized um architects to help bring in the historical look of the village into our, our development. Um so that's something we're accustomed to. We don't have um kind of like a, a, a box prototype that has to go on every site. We really do try to work within the. the framework of the community. Obviously, we want our building to fit in with the surrounding, but also stand out in that it, you know, is essential to our business to have a certain draw. We do also, part of our program, we develop a customer loyalty program. We really work with the with local manufacturers. We feature what we call a go-local section, which is an opportunity for startup convenience items, maybe like a popcorn or a beef jerky or a hot sauce or a pasta, those types of things that maybe are trying to break into the retail market that don't have a good distribution stream or marketing stream. And we let them join what we call our go-local program where we feature them for a period of time, give them floor space, give them opportunity to introduce their product to the communities over 24 locations, which is sometimes really hard for startup retailers to do. So you know, we're really proud of that. It's it's one of our distinguishing features. We help them advertise. We tie them into our advertisements and promotions. And it's something we take a lot of pride in, obviously, as a family-owned and locally, you know, residing in the communities that we operate, we take a lot of pride in helping our neighbors be successful as well.
Question, is there a proposed electric charging station on both of the new building alternatives or just this alternative three?
There is electric charging proposed on both option two and option three. They're in different locations relative to the building. But they but they're both included, yes.
Thank you.
It's Karen Jonasowski. Do you have questions, comments?
Sure. You know, as much as we're all fans of mid-century modern architectural gas stations, I wouldn't mind seeing this one get torn down and replaced. However, that does bring up a question, just just to make sure that there is there is no historic significance of this, the mobile station is there now. And if the architectural, you know, review board needs to, you know, pass judgment on it not having a historic significance, I don't I just don't want to see that trip up this development. That's all. So I'm just just throwing it out there.
Historic Preservation Commission.
It would be presented to the HPC to see if they had an interest in designating this property as a historic landmark. That's something that we do anytime a building is intended to be demolished.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I'm curious, would this remain as a mobile station or ExxonMobil, or is that not determined yet?
We have not determined that yet. We primarily do brand our convenience or our gas canopies mobile. Thank God of our 23, 15 of them are branded mobile. Six of them are branded Marathon. And we have started introducing a proprietary brand, which is a Quiklys branded canopy. It gives us a little bit more flexibility with the canopy where some of the other brands have higher demands for signage. And and sometimes, to be quite honest, that can become quite overwhelming these days with additional signage. And it's required by the brand, and we don't have control over that through those brand agreements. I mean, there are there are ways to mitigate that or reduce that through, you know, town restrictions. But for the most part, we have a lot more flexibility in design with with it being a proprietary. So and what I mean by that is it's it's unbranded fuel. It could actually be mobile fuel on the ground. It could be Sunoco fuel on the ground. It's whatever is available at the rack that day. You don't designate a certain brand, and then your canopy would would indicate, you know, Quiklys instead of a national fuel brand. And that's equivalent to like a Fast Track or a Burn Dairy, a Delta Sonic, for example, just some, you know, some other proprietary fuel that's in our community.
Sure. Okay. Because Mobile does have a a cool app that lets you use your your cell phone to to log into a particular pump and fuel up your car without having to use a credit card or anything like that. So anyway, I'm sure you're totally aware of that. Is that 2,500 square foot? Would that be typical for what might be called your your plain Jane type of convenience store?
Yeah, I would say that that's fairly typical without a food partner. That's a pretty average-sized convenience store. I think current currently, a lot of operations are building them bigger, but that's not necessarily critical for carrying the basic items. I would say that 2,500 square foot building is you know, just about the smallest that we would build currently.
All right. Thank you very much.
David Feder, do you have some questions or comments?
David?
I don't know if he hears us.
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, my, I'm getting a your internet connection is unstable message. Whatever that means. So my thought was that that concept three, although it's kind of futuristic and trendy, seemed to not be quite as practical for both the reason Laura said that it's sticking out almost in the intersection and plus the building has two doors. So I kind of liked concept two. And I thought you could make a couple tweaks to it that would make it almost as good as three. I mean, you have some landscaping out at the out at the point of the intersection. And you could stick like a table out there for somebody to sit if they wanted. So you still have like a little area to hang out. And also, not as important, but just a thought, you could extend the sidewalk on through to Elmwood. So you have a path kind of like in three to take a shortcut around the intersection and get to the store easier. So those are the things that jumped out at me.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I actually, I prefer three. I think that it fits in better with some of the for that area. I'm less concerned about the the site distance. They're all no turn on reds, if I remember correctly. So you're not going to, hey, you know, folks shouldn't be turning there anyway. But I think this one does a better job of of putting a good foot forward in a pretty location. And again, you know, this opportunity isn't going to come around again. So that's that's all I have.
Well, not sure we're giving you guys a clear direction.
Tell the truth, is it number one, number two, or number three, right?
I'm I'm in complete agreement with Jason. Number three is the preferred alternative for me. For a lot of reasons, I don't personally care. We've we've given the automobile a lot of consideration and worrying about site distances for people in cars is not my priority. And 12 Corners, we have tried in the past to to do what we can as a board to make it as pedestrian-friendly as we can. With some success, you know, a little bit of success over across the street at 12 Corners Plaza when that was was updated a little bit back when Rite Aid came in. But again, we we weren't able to get the parking to the back and the building moved up front. That was probably 20 years ago now. But Ken Pirelli is clearly in tune with urban design principles and terms of walkability and bike-ped access. And this this accomplishes this. Another a thing to think about is, you know, yeah, gas stations are going to be here for a good 20 years, but I don't think any of us are going to say 20 after 20 years that this gas station is going to operate on fossil fuel. I've waited 35 years in this community for this price, for this parcel to be modified. Always hoping something real would happen. We had some canopy improvements on the Sunoco Station, and we ran into that branding issue with their signage, but we got no, we had no opportunity relative to anything other than the canopy. So this is an opportunity, as Jason mentioned, that I would really hate us to miss. This kind of layout and design would actually put you in the forefront of not only local efforts, but nationally, a lot of organizations like the Congress for New Urbanism and APA and Urban Land Institute are all developing standards where gas stations are putting the building up front and the fuel canopies and pumps to the back. A lot have codes for this, but they're just not seeing them implemented. There are there are only a handful in the country. So I think you have a real opportunity. Can you find a way to not have to have two fronts? I apologize, but I can't necessarily see a way other than a corner entrance that could serve both sides and just let people deal with the fact that they have to walk around on the sidewalk out to your to your plaza and just have that one entrance. I wouldn't if that's a significant issue and affects your operations, I would, you know, ask you to consider, say, a corner entrance if that if that does work. But the fact that the the intersection side doesn't have an entrance, I don't know diminishes. I would like it to have some glazing and windows and the ability to see people and activity inside. But I think people being able just to go outside, have an opportunity to sit down is accomplished just by having that patio and plaza space out on that side. But this is, you know, whether you meant to or not, you're accomplishing a lot of very progressive ideas with this alternative. And I, for one, would not ask you to consider anything but that.
That was so good, Bill, that you've caused me to change my mind to three.
Okay, well, I mean, it would it would put all of us on the on the radar of of good design and good planning and equal equal attention to pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, fuel vehicles, electric vehicles. You're you're setting a lot of good precedents. So I guess that's, sounds like you have three of us at least that are thinking this would be a good alternative.
Hey, Bill, it's Ken Gordon. Could I ask just a couple operational questions, really just to follow up on a couple of things Karen raised, which I was interested in as well? And maybe Ken Pirelli or whoever can answer these. So I think I heard you say in response to Karen that one of the products you sell regularly is beer. And I see that you're planning to have outdoor dining in both two and, you know, concepts two and three. I'm just wondering if you considered or are familiar with Brighton's open container laws. You are adjacent, your eating areas are adjacent to sidewalks right there, which are public lands. And I just wonder if you've considered whether alcoholic sales, beer sales directly across from 12 Corners Middle School is appropriate. So just just something to think about there, perhaps, Ken.
Sure. And if I could address that question. So are our liquor licenses do not not do not allow for onsite consumption? So there, whether we have seating or not, there's there is no onsite consumption that is directly against the license that we hold, and we would be held to the penalties of the State Liquor Authority for those. There are no restrictions on sales of those materials across from schools. So I would say that they are a pretty integral part of a convenience store. And quite in fact, it's something that the the town of Brighton lacks availability for as it's as it currently stands. I can speak to the fact that we are extremely responsible retailers. I mean, we have a no, no ID, no service. You know, all all sales require ID, which actually gets us into a lot of hot water with, let's say, you know, a a 65-year-old male with white hair and a beard who, you know, is upset about having to
I'm not 65 yet.
That wasn't directed towards you, Ken. You don't have white hair. I'm I'm getting close to no hair. I'll take white hair. But yes, I mean, we run into more challenges for those issues. And we have not wavered on our policy once. I mean, it's a mandatory ID for for sales. And again, if there were any laws that the State Liquor Authority had again, you know, in terms of distances, now we can't advertise it. You know, just like tobacco, we can't have tobacco advertisements in the window across from schools. There are a lot of things to consider, but we don't actually do a lot of window advertising either. I mean, this is not your a bodega. This is going to be an upscale convenience store, interior design, interior decor, highest-end materials. Our presentation is going to be, you know, the best that around. I mean, and and so will our operation, our commitment to the operation will be the same.
Being a resident of Honey Island Falls, I'm actually somewhat familiar with your Quiklys, so.
I will raise something, Ken, along the same lines that you have addressed. And that is, I'm not sure that that Ken Pirelli is familiar with it or not, but there won't be any vaping products sold.
Right, that was going to be my next question. Thanks, Jerry, is I know that you sell smoke products. Do you sell e-cigarettes? And do you sell vape material?
We do sell e-cigarettes. Those are things that are a small part of our business and can certainly be eliminated from from the set, you know, based on any town policy or town code.
Yeah, we do. We do have a town code that restricts the sale of vape products and e-cigarettes to basically industrial zones or light industrials out in the town. So does restrict it within a 500 feet of the school or residential area. I mean, there'd be a lot of reasons why you couldn't sell e-cigarettes or vape materials out of
That's that's not a problem. I mean, current legislation on those is becoming so restrictive that the categories, it won't be long, you know, even in other C-stores where there are no restrictions by by town policy or code, they're becoming quite diminished as it stands anyhow.
Thanks for addressing this.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Ramsey, how about you? Do you have some questions or?
Well, I think a couple of observations, too. Our hours of operation in that zone district is 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, just for your information. I think we're going to need to talk a little bit about what's going on with that outdoor seating. Who's it intended to serve? Is it a is a community seating? Is it seating for a restaurant? That's a discussion we'll need to have so I can figure out how to, what the process would be for the outdoor seating. The other thing is, Jerry, we're going to need to talk about the different variances. I haven't looked at this plan very closely that you'll need. One of the things I do have a concern with is that the pumps and the gasoline sales are moving to a different lot. So I do not know So I do not know what that does to their non-conformance because you can't move a non-conformance to another area or another parcel of land. So we will need to look at that if you're going with number three. Number two, a lot of the same comments. If you're going there, we're going to need to figure out, are you meeting parking? And, you know, what are the variances you need and figure out the process for you guys to move forward. The other thing is that I'm going to need a, I would like to have a, a traffic study of the area because I am worried about gap analysis and cars being able to get in and out of there. That's part of the reason why we didn't allow convenience stores with gas stations, that we were worrying about the traffic congestion and the traffic hazards that could be created by them. And we've talked about that. So that is something that we certainly want to have a look at and just understand how this is going to operate in relationship to those intersections.
Okay, a lot of good points, a lot of things that we really have to take a look at in order to be able to effectuate, effectuate this plan and may make some determination on whether we're going with two or three because two clearly doesn't have the problem that you had spoken about, about the location of the gas pumps. So, yeah, we have to, we have to balance all of those things and try to figure out how, how best we get to where we all get to.
Yeah, yeah.
I would hope we could overcome those kinds of issues for the benefits that three would offer. This is, you know, we're going to be stuck with this another 50 years. And I would, I would hate to think we had an applicant that came in with this alternative and we find ways, too many ways for it not to happen.
And I know it's not typical for the planning board to affirmatively express their opinion to the zoning board on issues related to variance. But like I said, three, three does provide more challenges in terms of just the nature of the variances we would require in terms of the amount of relief, substantiality of the variances and the like, given its location. So we would hope if, if that's where we wind up with, with some support from the planning board and us going to the zoning board.
How do we, Ken or Ramsey, how do we, how do we show that, that support in a, in an appropriate manner? Should they come in with this?
Bill, I'm at both meetings. So I certainly can express that directly. I'm sure Jerry's going to be presenting at both meetings as our, you know, his clients, so.
They'll believe Ken more than they'll believe me. But, but the fact of the matter is, is that while it's not in Brighton's tradition, it certainly is a lot of other municipalities. So, I mean, we could, we could figure out the way.
I, I defer to Ramsey on this, but it's something that we, I think, try to not do is have the planning board to give, if you will, advisory opinions to the zoning board.
Yeah, there's also, it's outlined in our codes of what boards could ask, what, what advice or recommendations of what boards.
So, but, but I think there's a way to deliver that message, Bill. I really do, you know, and, and I think, you know, if Jerry and I are there both saying the same thing, I mean, that's a, it's a rare occasion anyway.
Like to think it's more common.
Okay, so I think we're actually presenting you a, a split decision. Unless John, Karen, or Laura have, have a change of heart. And then I think.
Well, Bill, I did, I didn't make a, I didn't make an opinion regarding one, two, or three.
Oh, I apologize.
I defer, I defer to someone more erudite than me to make that. So I, I'm totally on board with what you said, Bill. So thanks for asking.
I did not offer a firm opinion either. But I do, I do agree with you about having the building up front and being most visible from the intersection is something that is desirable. So.
Okay.
Jerry, maybe you can give me a call offline and we can kick around some ideas.
Sure.
Laura, did you have other thoughts?
Well, I appreciate your impassioned advocacy for putting the building up front. I still, I still have concerns about sightlines, especially at that intersection. So sticking with my original opinion.
Okay. Well, I never, I never really told you my real desire would be to have a four-story multi-use building over the.
I was wondering if you were going to keep it to yourself or come out with.
Uh, no. But that would put the pumps on the other side.
Certainly would.
Okay. Jerry, I hope gives you some thoughts, John Schrabbin, Lou and Ken. I know what you got to do. You got to go back and weigh everything. But you've been thinking out of the box a bit, and we appreciate it and appreciate your, these alternatives to us to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening.
Great, thank you very much. We'll, we'll be contemplating that. I'll take Ken up on his offer to give him a call. Ken, Ken Gordon, also be talking to Ken Pirelli. But, you know, and we'll, we'll see where it comes.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Folks, do we want to take care of our first application or public hearing? And then move to signs?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, I think, Bill.
Still some applicants, representatives on the line. So why don't we return back to Project NP NB1-20? This is.
21. Oh, it's 20, that's right, it's 20, sorry.
Yeah. So the project has been modified. Appears there are significant, well, there's, there's some other approvals necessary for prior to us making a site plan, determine, or a site plan approval. But why don't we first start by designating ourselves lead agency?
Thank you, Bill.
Your seeker. I move Planning Board approves taking lead agency under coordinated review for application NP, I'm sorry, Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We've moved and seconded Planning Board Taking Lead Agency under coordinated review. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Secretary, will you please call the roll?
I will. This is to designate the Planning Board as lead agency. Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sivletti.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Lead agency passes.
Okay. With the number of outstanding issues prior to us being able to make a secret determination and then have the zoning board of appeals make their decisions, do we have a motion to table the application?
I move the board tables application NP NB120 based on the testimony given and plans submitted. And the 23 items of additional information outlined in the Planning Board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
Is there a second?
There may be something in here talking about the West property line.
Lisa, was that you seconding?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, just before you.
I have a question on my own motion. Do we want the determination of significance in there since we already decided we're going to be lead agency?
No, you don't need the determination of significance. You think is, we're not there yet.
Okay, then I'll drop that. It'll just be requested to have a complete application.
That's right. Oh, no, I'm sorry, David. And it is, and to make a determination of significance because part of what you're asking for is the smittle of the final traffic and approval of DOT and Monroe County DOT.
Okay, then I'll leave it as it was originally.
You had it right the first time.
Hopefully whoever's taking minutes won't punish me.
Well, that's, you know, why you have an intern there to learn when we become difficult. Okay. So call the mo, call the order?
Okay, yeah, move and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sivletti.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Application is tabled.
Okay, thank you, everyone that participated in this application tonight. See you next month, I guess. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, shall we? We, we don't really do anything else with concept, do we?
No, I'll give them, I'll give them the conservation board comments and Eric Garcia's comments. We just have to talk about process and the best way to proceed at this point, Bill. More of a process standpoint.
Okay. All right, well, you, looks like you got some signs for us.
Yes, we do. And I don't know if this is actually on the agenda. Jeff, what sign number is this?
1397.
Add this to the agenda. They have made an application to the zoning board of appeals. It has not been heard to move this thing forward because he is trying to open after a long, long haul through a pandemic. I was thinking we may, if you're okay with the signage, that it's conditioned on getting the necessary variances from the zoning board.
Okay, and ARB did approve as presented, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Thanks.
I'm good. David, Vader?
I'm good. I want to eat there.
Okay.
So it's approved with the condition that all zoning board of appeals variances be obtained.
Yes. All right, yes, right.
I'll call the order if that's okay?
That's fine.
Osowski.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Sivletti.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, next one. I'll let you handle this one, Jeff.
This one's also not on the agenda. I don't know if it was approved the last time. Did you guys look at this one before? I think it was tabled based on the application from the ARB.
Yes, they had the fake brick.
Yeah. So they originally had like fake brick on the bottom and they changed it.
Okay, so this is 1057.
East Avenue.
And this is sign.
East Henrietta.
1598.
1598, okay, so now it's got.
Bless you.
Well, that, oh, that's.
So it's for both signs. They needed a variance for the sign, which they did get.
Okay. Well, that was tabled pending the.
There was a change in materials. Originally, you can kind of see it up here, but they had like a faux brick that was kind of painted on the metal.
Right. And is, has that, that detail been changed?
Yes. It's, it's shown now where it's the, it's the same kind of anodized.
Okay. All right. All right, so.
That is, if you're okay with it, it's approval as resubmitted.
I, yeah, okay. I think you just have to call the roll. So the, the motion is to approve as resubmitted.
That's correct, Bill. Did anyone make the motion? I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion.
As resubmitted, application 1598 for 1057 East Henrietta Road, a freestanding sign and a directory sign.
That's correct. Second?
I'll second it.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Sivletti.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Ramsey, this is Ken. Just, just so I can keep my score sheet straight, who made the motion in the second for Sunny's? I, I heard, I heard Mr. Vader strongly supported. I, I think that was either the motion or the second.
Yes, I think it was, I thought it was Price and Vader.
Okay.
Actually, Jason was in there somewhere, but.
As long as the records got a motioner and a seconder, I don't care.
Yeah, okay.
The next, are we ready to move on to the next one?
Yes, that would be sign 1599.
There's a few of these, but they have signs at three of their properties and are replacing the ones that are existing. So there's a few of these that look very similar.
This is the 1177, 1117 East Henrietta Road.
Yes.
Why don't you go to the next one, Jeff, and we could do maybe one motion for the.
This one's at 1919 Elmwood Avenue.
It's right up the road here.
It's a break tonian. Then the third one is at 2425 South Clinton Road, and that's for the Woodside Manor.
Okay. All right. Do we want to make a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve signed application 1599, 1600 and 1601 for Hurlebut Care Communities as, as presented.
I'll second it.
It's Vader.
Ramsey, a question from the Ken. No, no variance is needed based on the size or I, I'm just having trouble seeing it on my computer.
Jeff, go ahead.
They're, they're replacing them with those similar sized signs. They're not really changing the lighting or the size. So they're, and they're going in the same locations.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, so you go ahead.
Yes, I will, Bill.
Okay.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Sivletti.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Osowski.
Hi.
Thank you.
The next one is sign 1602, two, this is a 2210 Monroe Avenue for Ortho Laser. And then just replacing the, the existing sign cabinet. There's a place in the front of it.
And the plan with the architecture review board do?
They approved it as presented.
Okay. I'll move approval of application 1602 for Ortho Laser as presented.
I'll second it.
I got, I got Altman on that one. Osowski?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Sivletti?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
The next sign is signed number sixteen oh three at nineteen hundred South Clinton. It's in a Tops Plaza. It was approved as presented by the architecture board.
Jeff, do they have a CFC?
Uh, they have applied for it. I mean, they do have the CFC, yes.
Okay.
Are, are these the same guys that are operating out of the back of the building right now or?
I'm not sure. It does go through. It does go through to the back of the building, so they might be.
I think it's, I think it's someone new.
Is it?
I think, unless they're relocating.
Now, isn't there a guy on the back corner that prepares meals?
Yes, and I think this is different, Bill.
Yeah, that's Lean Nation, I think.
Right on the corner.
Yeah. Lean Nation.
Okay, so this is just a whole new tenant. Okay.
I'm surprised you could bring something.
Right on, right on the corner there.
Okay. There's, there's really, there's, this isn't contingent on something else, right?
No.
Okay, all right. I'll move approval of application sixteen oh three for RFG Training and Nutrition. Building face sign as presented.
Is that Babcock Steiner? Altman?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Sivletti?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
Uh, the last sign is sixteen oh four. They've, they've been in front of ARB and the planning board before, I think. They were tabled, there's three signs. There's a building face, this building face sign and then two freestanding signs. And the, the free, they said ARB was okay with a freestanding sign, but they wanted the building face sign to be changed. So it doesn't obscure the details of the arches. And so it was tabled for that reason.
Okay. So it, it's all one package. It's not a matter of.
Yeah.
Approving the freestanding sides versus the building face. Are they, are they taking up the entire building?
They're going to have different tenants, but they're the main one in the building.
Okay. All right. Guess I move to table application sixteen oh four, upper cervical chiropractic of Rochester for both the sign and the freestanding signs. Until they satisfy the conditions of the architectural review board.
Second is a Babcock. Altman? Price?
Aye.
Vader?
Aye.
Sivletti?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner?
Aye.
Osowski?
Aye.
That's everything, folks.
Right.
And yeah, just, just for the record, Bill.
Yeah.
So that, you know, no one reading this, these minutes or this record seems to think that Ramsey Bainer unilaterally amended the agenda. Actually, Sonny's Family Diner and ten fifty-seven East Henrietta Road did appear on the agenda under old business at the end of the signs. So they're, they're there. At least they're on my copy.
Oh, you know what it was? Was it on my cheat sheet?
Right, so.
Fine.
They're there. They're part of the agenda.
That's what threw me off. I was like, where are they? They were there. I thought I saw them. Okay. Thank you, Ken.
All right, well, go enjoy the rest of St. Patty's Day, everybody.
Everyone, thank you. Jeff, thank you.
Good night.
Jeff. Thanks, Alyssa, Rhonda, thank you.
Rhonda, thank you. Lisa, thank you for your guys' service.